Welcome, everybody, to the continuation of our Budget guided session for the next fiscal year. Tony, would you please call role?
Menace? Paralas? Diop? Carrasco?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Asparza? Arenas?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Camus?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Liccardo?
Here.
That is six.
We got six. I know a couple folks want questions who hadn't responded. They may just be joining us now. Why don't I jump in? Well, first, let me ask, does anybody want to put up their hand now to ask questions before I jump in? If not, then I'll go ahead and jump in with some questions. And perhaps as others join us, they can also add a few. I believe where we left off was with parks and libraries. And Jill, are you with us? Okay, is anyone from libraries with us?
I don't see anyone, Mayor.
Okay.
But we'll so we'll.
I can come back.
Yeah, we'll track Jill down.
Okay, yeah, I'll go to parks now and then we'll come back to. John, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. And on the the family camp closure, I know that's a $500,000 expenditure in the general fund. I was under the impression we were getting relatively close to having that become something close to being self sufficient on fees. Do you have any sense of what the gap was? I know we had done some reconstruction, so we could set us back, but.
Yeah, I don't, but Avio Tom, our deputy of parks should be on this call. Avio on here.
Maybe I can jump to the punchline and then you can figure out what's the best way to answer. Where I was going with this was if public health was not a consideration, is that something we could essentially open without a significant impact of the general fund? And the number I see on Roman numeral seven dash two two four suggests a $500,000 savings by halting family this year. But I'm not sure if that's a net savings or just a gross number that would be offset by fees.
It would be net. Usually when we're looking at the.
So this, the number you see in in the book is the net expenditure is the expenditure savings. Just in just a minute, I'll give you what the revenue offset is for that.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, we can come back to that. Second, I appreciated council member process creative idea about using VTA funding in collaboration with the Alfresco concept where we could both create active pedestrian and bike uses on streets where we also want to encourage perhaps outdoor dining and outdoor commerce. I know this is a lot to juggle in the public space, and I guess what I wanted to encourage, I know that lots of cities are trying the slow streets concept. And it's it's really hard, I think, as we all know, because we've tried this in various ways. And, you know, I was just on listening to NPR a few days ago, and there were a lot of upset businesses in Oakland who are saying, hey, we're on the verge of extinction, and now you're telling us you're going to make it even harder for folks to get to our front door. And so what I what I wanted to suggest was that we consider the closing not of streets, but of lanes of traffic. And that would enable some through traffic still, particularly in those vital business districts and neighborhood business districts that so depend on having the frontage. And I suspect it will make our lives quite a bit easier, too, in terms of outreach and any obligations we might have to deal with the heartache that comes with outright closures. I'm sure folks are already considering this, but it just seems to me where we might be able to close a lane that would enable us to push bikes into a traffic lane that's closed and then take up the whole sidewalk for outdoor commerce. That might be a good combination. But I'm assuming you guys are are well along on that thinking. I just wanted to throw in my two cents and also offer that since measure B money is, you know, it's it's not from the general fund of VTA. It's coming from a particular measure. There may be an opportunity for us to supplement that this year, given the unique circumstances we all face about making this transition to some combination of closed lanes and outdoor commerce with the expectation that it would be lesser in future years. So I would just throw that out as suggestions folks are thinking through this problem.
Sure, yeah. And it is something that we've we've talked about, you know, leaving like the two center lanes open and then taking the two side lane situations like that. So as a group, we have several different departments involved sorting this out. So I'll definitely take that back to everybody.
Okay, great, thanks.
Hey, this is this is Jim again. So it looks like from a budgetary perspective there that was primarily a full cost recovery program from a budgetary basis. So the revenue offset is about the same as the expenditure offset and about 500,000. So there's not a lot of net there.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, so that's back on the family camp issue.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for that. So here's what I just wanted to throw out. Obviously, we know the public health orders are moving target. And, you know, I'm certainly hopeful that our county might be moving with some of the other counties toward things like drop off retail as we're seeing that happen throughout the area. It seems to me that something like family camp is something that we could, in talking with public health authorities, find a fairly safe way. For example, if we just had everybody who's going to family camp tested the day that they're leaving, they would, we would have some assurance that everybody's in that relatively enclosed community would be safe. It seems like that's something we could still pull off. Now, obviously, I know all that comes with cost. But but I just wanted staff to consider whether we could do it in a way that could still enable safe participation if everybody who's there essentially comes out clean on testing. And I guess, John, is that something you guys had considered?
Well, not at the time we made the decision. This is one of the first things that we thought we'd close because we were in the process of trying to ramp up for family camp. You know, we were taking patients. And then we sent some staff up there to to, you know, usually towards the tail end of winter, we want to go up, fix up any damage that happened during the winter, get things up and running.
Right.
The residents up there started complaining to us that we were sending people from our, you know, we were kind of a hotspot at the time, if you recall. And they were mad at us that we even had people going there and said, you know, you need to stay in your own county and you know, because that because our guys stopped by the gas station and they got gas and they picked up some food or whatever. And
Yeah, right.
People got worried about it. So we'd want to feel comfortable that that county was also comfortable. But it was really more about, well, are we really looking ahead? Are we really even going to be able to bring groups of people to go like this? Because being in the tents, yeah, you're separated, but everybody has to come together in the mess hall and into the bathrooms. And so that those are focal points that we hadn't sorted out yet. And again, it was early in the process. And so we have to do a lot of seasonal hiring to make family camp work. It's usually about 50 people, part timers that we hire up. So that takes time as well. So it's possible towards the end, say, maybe September, we could be there again. When we first made this decision, testing wasn't even an option, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And or checking people's temperatures. Nobody was doing any of that just yet. So those are kind of newer things that perhaps we could incorporate, especially if the orders got a little easier to deal with.
Yeah.
That that we might be able to incorporate that. And I'm sure that people would be happy to keep their reservation and still come up. And we had a lot of people reserving spots already.
Well, I think I hear that, you know, for for very reasonable, easily justifiable reasons, the window is probably missed at this point. You mentioned you have a long lead time. You've got to, you got to do a lot of hiring and so forth. Does that make sense even for a short season if you were to open in, you know, at the end of August or something?
Yeah, it's hard to say. But.
John, I'll jump in.
Okay.
I was gonna, the models we've, Mayor, this is a great line of question. The models we've looked at at accommodating the operation for what we could expect in terms of future orders would put us in a tougher spot financially, because we would expect to have fewer people on site, given the dynamics John has shared about the communal restrooms and dining facilities. And and the cost and revenue would would really work against us in that situation.
Yeah.
But in the spirit of service, it's something we can look to for late summer and the fall, but there are some great challenges.
Yeah, I get it. Okay, I'll leave it alone. I was just hoping explorers. Because Jim reinforced my intuition, which is this is something we could operate relatively cost neutral. So perhaps this will be something for next year. And then I want to thank everyone for their work on the San Jose Bridge program. And I know as part of the budget message, there was a hope that we would see some, a report that may still be forthcoming on on the outcomes, both in terms of what's happening with the homeless individuals who were employed through the program and also how how we think we they did in terms of really being able to improve the aesthetic condition of those areas where they were assigned. Do, is that report forthcoming?
You know, I don't know if there was a report we were going to do specific to this program. I think it typically would show up in the Beautify SJ report, because that's kind of how we manage it. They've been on the sidelines, obviously, for a couple of months now in this program. But I believe that's where it is, but I'll have to check and see. I don't I don't recall that there was a standalone report about it, too, but.
Yeah, so in attachment B there, I think we we did to commit to trying to get an MBA out to the council as part of this process. So we'll see if we can put that together. But that was our, I think, the original intent back when the mayor's March message was released.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, it was something we requested specifically in the budget message. And I don't mind so much the form. If it comes as part of a larger report on beautify, that's great. I think I just really want to understand, you know, is this working? And if so, obviously, you know, I know we don't have the dollars today to suddenly boost the investment. But this is one of those programs, I think, that is really appealing to philanthropy. If we can show this works with our money, this is something that, you know, philanthropy is very interested in, based on my conversation so far. And we could really substantially expand it and hopefully get more people off the street and and obviously do something about the aesthetic condition of a lot of our our streets and neighborhoods. So I'm hopeful that we can just have some really strong metrics that we can then show to the outside world to help expand this program with with other people's money.
Sounds good.
Great. And then on libraries, is anyone from the library team joined us?
Jill's here, Mayor.
Great, thanks.
Sorry, I was having Zoom technical difficulties.
Hey, we've all been there. Hey, on the library hours, I know this was a really painful decision, the four hour reduction. Because I know I remember very well, I think it was my second month in office, and you come coming to me saying, hey, I've got this really creative idea to try to see how we can restore hours. And, you know, I think it was the most exciting thing anybody had done in any budget in years. We were, everybody in the council was jumping for joy. So the $1.5 million. Are we to look at that as a linear cost? In other words, if we were to find, say, 750,000, does that get us two hours? Or is this a nonlinear issue because of all the vagaries of hiring and everything else?
That is a really interesting question. It is non, it's not completely linear. But I definitely think that if we were able to get staffing back, we would, we would, we would try to restore as many hours as we could. And I think we could probably do two hours. The, you know, the challenges we're cutting, we're actually cutting more than than a direct cost than the number of hours that we're reducing. But we are, you know, as you know, our staff is super nimble. And cutting hours, as you said, is is kind of like the biggest pain point for us because we don't want to be closed to the public. We actually want to expand our hours. So we're looking at new modified service models that could even extend our, you know, our ability to be open, despite the fact that we'll have fewer staff. But also keeping in mind the the need for social distance in the future and how that might change how we use our facilities and how how folks can use the library and how can we facilitate them using the library outside of the buildings. So the short answer is probably and to yes, although Jim probably wants to weigh in about the funding piece of that. And yet we're going to try to, we'll try to flex as much as we can to be open as many hours as we possibly can.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I know that, but this stuff is hard because the numbers may get worse for us, not better in the next few weeks. So we just, we, I know I don't want to create unrealistic expectations, but we do have a small essential services fund, obviously. And this would be one of those things that I think many communities would consider essential service. What would also be helpful to know is, has there been extensive conversation about whether, you know, since libraries have really gone online, and by the way, I was just trumpeting that fact on our, we have our little six minutes with Sam we do every day. And that was my topic yesterday was all the great services we're offering to the community virtually and online. Are there, is it possible for us to allocate any particular cost center to what we're doing for the community about COVID? That is COVID related questions, providing COVID related information. For example, I know library has a good network in the community already. And if we're making sure it's the libraries that are conveying all the information around testing, does that then provide a basis either for reimbursement or for CARES Act that enables us to fill some of that hole? Those are the kind of the questions. You probably understand where I'm going with it.
Yeah, luckily, we have two incredible public information officers that have been integrally involved with the city's COVID response from the very beginning, partially because their deep connections to the community and they're bilingual. And so they have also been able to get every, all the information's coming through the city. We are also distributed through library channels and they are, and we are accounting for their time. I think we could talk further with the administration about whether there's other aspects of the service library provides that that is dedicated to that and whether we could get recuperate that. But I would, you know, in that line, I was just thinking that if if there is the ability to invest more money in library services, we are thinking really strongly about this idea that we need to facilitate our community's access to information and knowledge outside of libraries, too. And that, you know, we are looking at circulating hotspots, circulating laptops into communities. And so, you know, we might want to consider, and, you know, sort of enhancing library access, but thinking about the options for investing in in really boosting a program like that where we could, we could immediately work on putting together sort of a library in your home type of program that where people could utilize that hotspot also for things like education and and other, you know, telehealth, getting a job, all that stuff that we provide at the library, but they could provide, they could access it 24/7. And the it could be checked out to them through their eCART or something like that.
That's, that's, that's interesting. I wondered, we had the conversations with our FEMA consultants yet about whether library related response on distance learning in particular for public school students, whether that qualifies for FEMA reimbursement?
I would ask city manager's office or spawn.
Here. I see Lee is on. So you're asking specifically, Mayor, about FEMA reimbursement. So that, well, I'll give it to Lee. Is that too far afield?
Yeah, so I think it's something that we can get more clarity on. One of the things that FEMA does is looks at normal operations and if a jurisdiction, another jurisdiction in your area is primarily responsible for that. So on some of the conversations with them thus far around distance learning and some of this, they've said the school districts would would be able to seek FEMA reimbursement for some of it. But I think we just haven't done a very good job of making our case of what Jill and team have done thus far. So we can, we can chat with Whit O'Brien and follow up.
I think their clarity is that we're talking about adults as well. We're talking about not just children in the public school system.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know there's several elements here that we, this is probably a more complex conversation than we could have now. But, you know, certainly I'm interested in what the library is doing around supporting distance learning for those children who are obligated to be in school. So they think that if there's a legal requirement, that might be a basis. But second, as you know, Lee, we're significantly under utilizing our testing facilities for COVID. And there seems to be a significant information gap. And I know there is a broadening of the screening criteria in those testing locations and more is going to be announced in the days ahead. And the ability for us to utilize, you know, a strong team at the library to do that communicating, communicating particularly in Spanish and in Vietnamese and to do so in locations of our city where we know they're harder hit seems to be a pretty compelling public health. So anyway, I know you guys are looking under every rock for FEMA reimbursement. I just wanted to throw that out. Because I think we're going to need a significant ramp up for communication around testing anyway, if we're going to try to meet our goals of driving to 4,000 daily tests countywide. And I'm hopeful that, you know, Marty Fenshawe Shid taking over the county is a breath of fresh air. I think hopefully that's going to drive a creation of some kind of larger strategy. And I would expect part of that strategy is going to be, hey, City of San Jose, communicate more to your own residents about our own testing. And I would hope, I'd like to think there's, there's a lot of synergy there. Cool. Thanks. Thanks for your willingness to take a look at it, Lee. And then the last question I had, and it's kind of more of a Jim question or Jill. With regard to the libraries, was there an assumption embedded here about when the physical doors could actually open? When you're assessing the cost, and I'll jump again to the punchline, which is if the county order is such that we can't even open the doors till October, let's say, the physical doors, does that change our ability to fund hours when those doors are open?
I will, I'll just start off by saying that I believe when we were developing these, there was an assumption that we were working with the current, the current order or the previous order, whichever, I can't remember now, but that it would be go through May and that we may begin to phase in services starting in the summer. So if that changed significantly, I know Jim and I have talked about recouping any savings from modified service models as well. If we're not able to engage all of our positions, for instance, in service, that that money could then go back to enhancing the library's budget.
Yeah.
But we are also looking at the fact. But we are also looking at the fact that there are, there is an opportunity for libraries to do more services that are outside the buildings, perhaps curbside pickup and those kinds of things that other libraries are doing in California. We had wanted to wait until we got more information from a study that's being done about the safety of circulating materials through the Institute of Museum and Library Services in DC. And so, so that we could be doing best practices. But we have been planning to try to get materials out to the community even before our buildings open. Just so you know that, so we have kind of a phased-in approach that doesn't involve being open. But then with the opening, if it gets pushed back that far, I absolutely think we would have more savings. And Jim wants to comment.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think there in the, the library section of the budget book, there's just, there's two kinds of proposals related to that. One is a four-hour re, reduction that we were talking about. And there's another one of just an acknowledgement of the limited operations of library in the beginning of the fiscal year, which is another $133,000 of savings on top of the positions that would already be eliminated. So I think to the extent that that changes or the operations ability changes, that savings amount would change too. And, 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 you know, we had to monitor that throughout, throughout the year.
Yeah, well, I just let me chime in. I think just acknowledging here, you know, the write-ups that we put in the budget are static, right? It was a, this is kind of what it could look like, and we're in an extremely dynamic environment. Yeah. You know, the reduction is what we need to balance the budget. But, you know, we have to, I think, accept and, and hope that it's going to be, you know, a lot of flexibility in terms of how Jill actually designs the, the, the response and how, how she adjusts the hours and all of that. So, you know, I think I wouldn't, I wouldn't hang our hat too, too much on the actual description in the budget book because, you know, as I just said, pretty static in a very dynamic situation. Yeah, fair point. So I appreciate your patience with my probing around the assumptions. What I, what I think I hear is that the assumption was in the, in the budget was doors would be opened by the first fiscal, first of the fiscal year, July 1st. But these, but Jill is also putting a plan together where essentially there is the equivalent of alfresco libraries to be able to provide materials to folks, even if the doors are not open.
Yeah, that's probably what we're calling it too.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I mean, even more like fun stuff that we're thinking about. But yeah, in the original assumption, it was that we could open at the first of the fiscal, but that it, the service may be modified to things like quick pickup, you know, modified versions of programs. So we wouldn't be fully, we would be open those hours, but it wouldn't be the full-service library that you're used to.
Right.
Necessarily, right?
Okay, so someone runs inside and gets the book and then delivers it to that person outside?
Yeah, well, that's the first version. That's kind of like the pickup version. If we opened our buildings, we, you know, our buildings are designed in such a creative way that there's kind of a marketplace space, we call it in the beginning and the front, where you can pick up your holds, you can look at new materials, you can look at videos and do quick checkout at the self-check and have minimal staff interaction. And so we're looking at being able to open those first and seeing how that goes and how we can manage like flow of, of folks coming in. But also recognizing that we need to have programs after school, once school starts and in the summer. So how could we also do, you know, utilize our community rooms to do some sort of programming? So that was kind of phase one in our minds. And then that may be for a three-month period as we get the rest of the buildings ready for the use to expand.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess just the last point, I know we were talking about things like FEMA reimbursements and so forth. And if, if we were to be using, for example, library communications team in this way, I assume that means that they're less available to communicate about the library itself if they're communicating about FEMA. And, and I'm just want to sort of do a temperature check here. If that is something that is a, a reasonable assumption for us to make is okay.
Okay, yeah, I, I think though that, you know, our, part of our role as the library is information and referral. It's a huge part. And so we actually, you know, our team is great about sort of men, vending that work into the work that we do to communicate to the public. And so, you know, I think like, like everybody across the city, staff are working way more than their normal hours. And when you're working from home, it like never ends, it feels like. But they're, you know, they're really committed to the work. And so I think we're, they're doing okay.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Thanks, Jill, thanks for all the work that everybody in PR and S and libraries are doing right now. Because I know you guys are, they've always been on the front lines and now the front lines are even harder to, the tasks are harder, it's much more complex, it's all moving very fast and there's a lot more work. And I just appreciate all, all that folks are doing in both of those departments because it's, it's, it's their, really the first contact that we have with all of our residents. It's so important, so thank you. Okay, Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to echo my colleagues on the need for, you know, something along the lines of Viva Caya. I know there was a lot of discussions yesterday around that and Mayor, Mayor's comments earlier. I have seen it in our parks. We have families who, like ourselves, have been cooped up and really want to come out. I think kids are used to being able to run around in summer. And I think it's part of some healthy activities that we could promote as a city and to promote some socially distant activities that families can do in our neighborhoods. And, and so one, I wanted to add my comments to the others about the need to find, maybe it's not Viva Caya, maybe it's something else, but the need to promote those types of activities. And so I wanted to ask John, are we, how are we looking at summer programming?
Sure, thanks, thanks for the question and thanks for your background. And I keep putting zoo ones up there through the carousel. Right now, the, the main summer program we're planning through the community centers will be summer camps in some form of childcare. We see that as a going, going to be an increasing need as hopefully orders start to loosen here. Outside of that, we weren't planning on doing too much programming. But, you know, as of yesterday, as we started talking about place making and what can and can't be done, the team is already sprinting with that information right now. So we'll send NBA back to you about what we think that could look like in programming in our parks and getting people outside in a safe way, but, but in an engaged way. So we'll have more to come, but they're, they've got a lot of ideas already.
Oh, that's great to hear. I know one of the things we always say here at the city is the libraries of the living rooms and the parks of the backyards that kids don't have. And so they're two critically important services that we provide to the residents of our city, especially for families who are living in overcrowded living conditions or, or just plain old have been cooped up and are ready, because I think we're all ready. Thank you for that. I also wanted to ask a question on, where is it? Page, section 7227, as we go into PAL. So because of COVID, our committees have not been meeting. And so I know that this was an item that was to be discussed at, I believe, NSCE. And so can you talk a little bit, I'm, I'm excited. I think it's great news that we're investing in the future of PAL and to having it be a sustainable, vibrant service that we offer to our youth in San Jose. Can you talk a little bit about the planning, funding, the operating model, planning, funding here?
Yeah, so this one, this is just carrying forward what was already there, what's there now. But we had not filled, so there's, there's four positions involved here. One of them is a rec program specialist and another one, some rec leader hours. And those are going to help us with programming at the site. The other two positions were more about maintenance and taking care of the grounds. So that just carries this forward. This, this is separate from the conversations we had more recently been having in NSCE. All that sort of stopped when everything shut down because obviously we can't, we can't do sports there or anything. We have talked with them because obviously, as you probably know, there's a testing site there now. We coordinated that with them and stayed in touch. And, and so it's not that we've lost touch, it's just we've lost momentum just given where we're sitting.
And could we, well, I mean, I guess, I'm happy to see this carried over. I think it's work that we need to do and we owe it to the residents of our city as well as PAL and, and our own PR and S team to do that. One of the things that has been discussed has been about using sort of, or bringing in other activities into PAL. Do you see a future where post-COVID, we can bring in some sort of non-traditional activities into PAL for families post-COVID as we try and concurrently move forward on an operating model?
Yes, and we've, and we've talked with them too about that. And it could be, you know, movie nights out on the field and things like that. But we could, we definitely, part of, part of what this package does have in it are those programming specialists, right? So they're, they're there to help figure out how to program. And the model we were coming up with was, you know, PAL, you do whatever leagues you do and you'll have that certain amount of slots or time, but all the other stuff will just start programming. And it can be other sports or other non-traditional, non-sports activities. So yes, that is definitely part of the plan.
Great. And then I wanted, just to highlight the fact that the Vietnamese-American Cultural Center is moving from one, from year to year to ongoing funding. And, and that's been a critical facility, you know, with lots of programming and a lot of enthusiasm around that. So can you talk a little bit about how, what this means to us going from year to year to ongoing for the VACC?
Yeah, so one of the great parts about this is it, it makes the program more permanent and more stable. You know, it's not every year you gotta justify it and rebudget it and rebudget it. So this keeps it as an ongoing, it makes it newly an ongoing program. So this ability will be important. It's not, we're not adding anything more than what's there. It's just making what's there permanent.
Great, well said. And then I had a question around Project Hope. So that is carrying over. And what does that mean for the timing? Does that mean that we are waiting because there was a schedule? So the other sites in the future just are pushed back a year? Or what does that mean for the future for bringing those other sites online as we rotate out Project Hope locations?
Yeah, so as soon as we can start bringing people together in groups, we can start ramping the program back up. We had, we had start, we, if you recall, in this, the budget year we're in, we added basically six sites. We got to three of them, stood up, started getting the meetings going, started, starting engaging. We were still struggling with hiring the remaining staff when all this hit. And so that all went on pause. And then we decided, okay, well, let's carry this forward for next year so that we can still get to those other three and get those going. So we're still intending to get to all six. But the timing of when things happen is somewhat dependent on the orders because again, we can't, you know, a big part of it is, you know, for lack of a better term, we do little mini block party events and things like that and which are fun, but, you know, and we do Viva Park things with them and all that's great. But, you know, again, it's bringing groups of people together. And so that's a constraint for us in terms of making progress the way we'd want to. You know, we're not doing the same thing, you know, dumpster days and stuff like that. All that stuff is on hold right now. So, and those are all pretty important components to the program. So I can't say for sure when it'll all start because it's dependent on the orders. But as soon as we can get back out there, we'll definitely be back out there.
Okay, and, and in terms of the other, so we can only do this, oh, see, that's what I get for holding up my hands while I'm Zoom, is we can only do so much and the other sites are going to have to wait until the cycle finishes with the three that we have before we can go into the other locations?
No, no, this is more of a, a hiring thing. Most of these positions are vacant that you're seeing here. And so, you know, we've got to get the bodies in to be able to do the work. And then we should be able, you know, if the plan had gone off as expected, we would, we would have already been in those other three sites by now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Because I have one site that has been, you know, behind, right? And then I have another location that really, really needs Project Hope. And so, you know, it impacts the other sites as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley.
Great, thank you, and good morning, everyone. I, I just want, I have a few questions. I had a few questions last night, but conversation today has triggered a few more conversations, questions for me around the library and the parks. I just want to echo how important the libraries and our parks are to the well-being of our community. You cannot go to one neighborhood that isn't concerned and impacted by and love their parks and their libraries. And I know in budget times, we tend to look at the library and the parks as the one place where we can get some cost savings or recognize some cost savings. But it is with severe consequences to our, our neighbors who utilize the parks on a regular basis. So I understand the need to balance the budget. So this is more of an overarching conversation around quality of life and providing opportunities for all of our residents, residents to go out into, as Councilmember Sparza said, into our backyards, which are our parks, and our living rooms, which are our libraries. So I just want to echo everyone's support of the libraries and the parks. But I have a couple of questions around the libraries, I mean, and, and then the parks. I'll get to both of you. Jill, you're first. Last time when we shut, when we closed libraries, I was a school board member. And I remember the conversation came up many, many times about why doesn't the schools' libraries, the, which were also closed and reduced hours, but particularly in the elementary schools, why was there not a partnership between the schools and the libraries, libraries to keep both open for the amount of time that we needed to? After-school is really, really critical, as you know, and access to materials and technology is one of the reasons we need to keep our libraries open. It's one of the reasons we are spending money or, or putting an emphasis on the digital inclusion because libraries aren't open right now to help with homework centers and such. So have we investigated or is there a possibility of investigating a partnership between the school districts? I know that, that this comes up. I, I was on the other end where why aren't we doing it with the city? So now I'm on this end, why? Is it, is there an opportunity here to investigate a partnership regarding specifically the hours closing? So we don't lose hours on either side?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think that since the last, since that happened, unfortunately, in our schools, what we have seen is a, is that many schools don't actually have libraries anymore. And if they do, they haven't been, they're not able to keep them up to date and have the, the kind of collections that support learning. And, you know, some districts have one librarian for the entire district, some have zero. And so in that context is really where we grew the education and digital literacy strategy with council support. And so thankfully, because of that, we actually have contemplated a number of partnerships that could meet the students' needs for library access. Everything from the Mount Pleasant Library that is on a school campus, which was kind of like the, the biggest partnership we've done. But other schools we've worked with to provide materials directly to the site. We've, I think that the student library card has been the biggest, the other sort of biggest project that is now extended to nine districts, where every student automatically has a library card that is associated with their student ID. And so they can have access to all the 2 million collection items that we have, plus all the online resources. And as that expands into perhaps being able to check out laptops or hotspots or other things, also looking at ways that we could get materials delivered to schools. I mean, so we're looking at Also looking at ways that we could get materials delivered to schools. I mean, so we're looking at partnerships that way. Again, or, you know, finding out if, I think with Alamo Rock District, the superintendent and I have been dreaming up lots of ways. That we could enhance library access through the school, including, you know, an integration of the library catalogs and things like that. So I, yes, I think that unfortunately through the, the, the low budget years and the impacts to the schools that have been longstanding. That's, it's inspired a lot of creativity around partnership. And the partnership may look different in different districts based on what their needs are. But so yes, we'll continue that conversation. If there are any ideas from schools or board members, we'll discuss it with them.
I, I appreciate that. And, and I know that the funding the school districts get for their libraries. Is pennies on the dollar for the amount of books that they can purchase. And, and most of the schools, high schools, don't really utilize the media center, they call them, not even libraries. To, to the effect that elementary schools were. So I'm particularly thinking of schools like Washington Elementary. Has a pretty good library. And I know there was grants and partnerships with Target. Who would come into the library, the local public schools and build up the library. They create bookshelves, they bring in materials, and they were doing that pretty much all over the city. So I don't know if there, if that's still available, but I, I just wanted to put that out there as an opportunity to maybe. Address the, the shortage, cutting back the hours because our residents don't want to see that. They don't want to hear that. They want to hear that we're expanding hours because that's important to many, many of our residents. I, I polled my community a few weeks ago, and one of the things that rose to the top of the budget. In, and protecting things was number one, public safety. Transportation was a big deal, potholes. But really what rose to the top, and I wasn't surprised about it, is maintaining libraries and our parks. So that people can benefit from using them. So I appreciate that you're, you're thinking about that partnership. And then did I read that there was a proposal to close a library? And if so, how is that decision made? Or did I misread that somewhere? Or was it not reopening one? And I can't remember where I saw it, actually.
Oh, okay. So there's two possibilities for that. One was that we do, we do have a remaining capital budget from our library bond. And for some time, we've been looking at the potential for renovating as many libraries as we can with that funding. So one of our proposals was potentially to, or we've been talking about for some time, was to, if we close a building for renovation. We could potentially redeploy that staff into vacant positions and then recoup a significant savings. That's not an ongoing savings, obviously. It's temporary with the construction. So that's something. And also, we work with our Public Works Department, which is significantly impacted by the current recovery program. So the only other thing was that we were looking at the Mount Pleasant Branch. You know, Community Library has hours that are permanently funded for 24 hours a week. And we had temporary hours for full service, which was 47 hours a week. And that was a one-time add. So that is not in the, in the next year's budget, but it would not be closed.
Okay, it was just a change in operations. Okay, I, I, I misread that then. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, Jill, I think I'm finished with you for the time being, but, but I do appreciate the libraries. And I look forward to creative ways that you'll be able to open up in a post-COVID world. Can you hear my garbage truck in the back? A little noisy right now. Hopefully he'll pass soon. Okay, John, I have some questions for you about the parks. People love our parks. But yesterday I held a neighborhood meeting with Branham Park Neighbors, and they are not happy. About the condition of the parks. And we talked about, you talked about yesterday, how we're saving. We'll be able to save on water costs, 1.5 million, I think, based on this technology. Is that available at all of our parks? And if not, how do we make it available at all of our parks?
It's not available at all our parks. We, we would ultimately like to have it throughout the parks. There's obviously expenses to putting it in as well. So in our initial phase, we rolled out at the parks where we had the most water usage. So that we could realize the, the greatest savings first. Avi Yotam, Deputy Director of Parks, to comment further in this.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Councilmember. So at this point, as, as John was alluding, we've deployed these smart irrigation controllers. At roughly a quarter, we've replaced roughly a quarter of our irrigation controllers, 80 out of about 316 in our park system. As we realize savings, we've, we've been discussing with the Budget Office, you know, how to, how to look in the future. To take some of those savings, to keep rolling through and installing further smart irrigation controllers. This budget action, we, we do see an ability to, to do this without impacting our park system. We've carried over a, a little bit of cushion in past years that really was a, a little bit of contingency for extreme weather. And, and a need to really put a lot more water into the parks. So by taking a little bit of that contingency away and also by realizing the savings from, from these smart irrigation controllers. And a lot of very, very, very hands-on management. We see that where we could do this without really impacting the parks.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to summer camps, I just want to emphasize how important those are for our kids to benefit from outside activities. And, and events other than just staying in their house. Year over year, if you're a parent of small children, you're looking for those summer camps opportunities. And I know many of our summer camp providers are probably really struggling this year for not being able to open up their summer camp facilities. So, John, I have a question for you regarding partnerships. I'm thinking of organizations like the YMCA and other groups who have summer camp programs. Is there a possibility of creating partnerships that would allow us to expand our summer camp opportunities? With the assistance of other groups who are already professionals in that field as well, in the summer camp avenue? And Avi, are you at Alamo Rock Park?
Very good. Yes, not only is the opportunity there, it's something we do already. I think I talked yesterday about, you know, we already had quite a few registrants already for summer camp before we shut it off. And I'd say 40% of those were registering to other, other private groups that work with us. And work, and they'll do their programs in our parks. And so that can be soccer camps and things like that. So, so yes, we do work with them. Yes, we have partnerships with them. So we would expect that to continue this summer.
Okay, very good. And then I noticed. And I don't know who's this a question for. It has to do with the senior transportation program. It looks like we're reducing. The access to seeing the senior transportation program. Can someone give me background on what that is? And the number of seniors impacted?
Sure. So the good news here is, is no seniors will be impacted. We had, this was a, a program. That we set aside so that we could help, but then the county started stepping up and providing gas cards and other kinds of. Ways to transport, I can't remember. So we really don't need the money. But Andrea, Andrea Flores Shelton is on here. She's Deputy Director. I'll ask her to comment further.
Councilmember Foley, thank you. What we have done is the Mobility Management Program for County Social Services has taken this over. And so this is money that we were actually trying to earmark or reallocate to personnel. So that we could do more work actually with our seniors, and we were unable to do that. So we're actually, it's, it's money that we were unable to reallocate, and there isn't a transportation need in terms of giving out the cards. That's all taken care of. And given that we don't have vehicles of our own in, in a large scale. We're again, just thinking this, this is money that won't impact seniors and that we can give back to the general.
I'm really happy to hear that because when we, when we apply the equity lens, which is really important. That we don't forget about our senior population who has difficulty in accessing some of our services. So it's important that we don't decrease their access to our senior nutrition center, as an example. Or any other programs that we're offering to them, that we make sure that we continue our funding to assist our seniors. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Thank you. That's, that's the end of my clarifying questions. Thank you.
Councilmember, I just want to add in regards to Branham Park, we are aware of the irrigation issues there. And it's not a function of the watering levels. There's some underlying infrastructure work that has to happen. So our crews are working on that. And we'll continue over the next few weeks.
Thank you. I know you've been hearing from my team, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And if I may, in terms of the partnerships for camps, we also have the Boys and Girls Club is in Alamo Rock Youth Center. Eden Vale. So we do have partnerships within our Neighborhood Center Partnership Program, otherwise known as REUSE.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I, I wanted to say that I very much appreciated the questions around open streets and park activation. You know, that's something that over the years since I've been in office, that every year during the budget process, we've submitted BDs. To get some of the funding for movie nights and Viva Parks, because I think that's something that, that the residents have expressed to us that they very much appreciate. And so last budget cycle, we said, and I don't have the exact amounts, but we submitted some, some asks that were approved. And so our thought going into pre-COVID is that this summer, or maybe around this time, we would be having some of those events. But obviously, those are not happening, which we to- totally, completely understand. And, and so I guess my, my question is, is this, is how, how is that money going to be treated? Is it going to be rolled over? Is it going to be, do, do I need to ask from, you know, I'm just curious as to how, how to, sort of how to manage that, right? So if and when things open up, and let's just assume it's, it's within the timeframe that the weather's halfway decent. That we can take advantage of those approved funds. So I'm not sure if that's for you, John, or someone from the Budget Office. But curious as to how that, how that's going to work.
Yeah, so sad news there is that was, th- those types of one-time monies were used to fill this year's budget deficit. So they're not going to be available for rollovers, my understanding. I don't know if Jim has anything more to add to that.
Yeah, I think that was part of our conver- conversation. So some of those, some of those savings, I think, looks like that was, that was part of the savings in the, the parks budget. That was, that was used to help shore up the anticipated deficit for 1920.
Okay, well, we love the Parks Department, so that, I'm totally okay with that. And we, quite frankly, anticipated that. I just, I don't think we had gotten clarity. So, John, you may have in fact received probably an email from someone from my team asking some of those questions. So, so thank you. So I guess the, the other thing I'm thinking about is this, you know, the B, the submission of BDs. I think the, the deadline is the 28th of this month, if I have it correct. It's coming up though, right? And, and so what I'm curious about is, what, what I don't want to see happen is that asking for funding this budget cycle. Essentially to be used next summer, right, is the way we've typically approached it, and it seems the way that it works. And so. And, and maybe this is a question for the mayor as well, but how, how would it be recommended to council offices to manage some of that, right? So for example, I'm thinking that let's put in some BDs for a small amount of money for a few movie nights, right? That's not, knowing that it's not going to be utilized now, but maybe for next summer, right, after the next budget cycle and such. And, and so how would you all recommend that we approach those asks? Knowing that we don't, we're not quite clear as to where we're going to be as a city, as far as opening up parks and gatherings and such. I'm trying to figure out how to approach that. So if you have any thoughts or suggestions, I'd be appreciative. And that's for whomever.
Yeah, I, I could offer one first cut at it, and then staff can probably correct me on it. Yeah, a- as you mentioned, Councilmember Jimenez, if, obviously, we're going to be subject to the county public health orders. But, you know, if, if the budget document says, please, you know, let's, let's set these up as soon as we're humanly able to actually get them open. And county order doesn't allow us to do that in the summer, then obviously it would be for, for next June.
Yeah, okay.
I think maybe it's the clarity too, maybe when, when those come forward on a technical basis, we can. You know, therefore the following summer, we might, might treat them a little bit differently to put them in, in a reserve potentially for the following year. If, if that's a BD that ultimately gets moved forward in the June, the June message.
Yeah, because I think the way it's typically being handled is we ask for it, say, this budget cycle, right before the end of the fiscal year. And then it's, it's usually utilized, that money's utilized next summer, right? So what I would hate to have happen is if we don't ask for it, then next summer, let's just say that things open up. We're not going to have asked for any money, and we're in effect not going to have anything to put on or any of the resources necessary. And I really do think that the, these things are important, even though they're small dollar-wise, they really offer a lot of bang for our buck. And then it really brings the community together. And, and especially, given the fact that many people have been staying at home. I think people are going to be yearning to get out, to enjoy parks, assuming we can, right? I, I think it's going to be something very important. So, so I guess, given that, and John, I don't know if you have anything to add. But given that, I, I think you, you should be expecting to see something from our office for next summer, assuming, you know, things are open and things are available for usage. But if you have any thoughts, feel free to share.
Yeah, no- nothing specific. Look forward to the BD.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fraz?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually want to follow up on some of the things that you had mentioned. One of them being for the Alfredsco and the potential for Viva Caya. And I know you had mentioned some of the troubles we may have with shutting down full streets. I just want to make sure staff is fully aware. We do have right successful streets in downtown where they would be ready for full closures. Where we have piloted either San Pedro, St. John, South Pur Street. And potentially even Post Street where we were going to begin to do a, a pilot. So I think there's, there's opportunities to fully close some streets, but I, I would agree with you, Mayor. There may be challenges along some of these other corridors. And, and in fact, when Oakland first unveiled their plans, I, I don't think they went and did any community engagement. At least, I, you know, not that I'm aware of, and certainly the, the, the speed that they unbilled that program. And I know how much time we put in just working with a few streets to talk to their, the business owners, the property owners, the stakeholders. To get those streets shut down. And so when, when that happened, I recognized that they would probably find some challenges that they bump into. If, if you know, you didn't necessarily work with the community to do that. The other, the other thing was in regards to the family camp, is there an opportunity to lease that space? So that somebody else could use it? And, and, you know, if we're not operating it, but, but just to lease it out. If, let's say, for instance, you know, midsummer, there is an opportunity now to get back into Yosemite. And I know you were saying, John, that clearly, right, we, we would have had to step up already. And so is, is that a possibility?
It is. We, we actually have, there's usually two or three, and Avi can comment on this. I think it's usually two or three events where they, where it's rented out for like the whole weekend or a few days. By, you know, either one, one entire group. The Conservation Corps usually goes up there for a few days every year, and they fix up a bunch of stuff for us while staying there. And that's all basically one group. Avi, I don't know if you want to add to that?
That, that, that's, that's perfect, John. We do usually have some shoulder season rentals. And at this point, we're, we're hopeful and planning for that possibility. Looking really at the heart of this summer, we're, we're looking to partner with the California Conservation Corps to host them as they do work in the area. And in exchange, they would be helping us maintain and do some work on the infrastructure on, at the site. As the county orders for, for us and for Twalome County loosen, and as we evaluate what kind of options there could be. Well, we'll definitely, we're looking for those opportunities to do things in a, in a fiscally responsible manner that, that definitely provides service.
Thanks, Avi. I think we might have lost Row. The ba- I think.
I'm here. Yeah, I'm, I'm here. No, I-
No, I'm here. Yeah, I'm, I'm here. No, I, I just, that's why I, I, I got, I got a lot that goes on in the background. That's why for the, for the most part, I, I go off video. And sometimes, but I figured you guys might like to see who was making the noise. So I threw them on for a second there. No, but thanks for the, for the answer there. I do think, you know, it certainly it's, that's a bummer knowing that, that family camp had become something that was, was neutral now, cost neutral, right? And so it's a bummer to, to see that, you know, that, that loss of opportunity. So that's why I was just thinking maybe there's, there's some potential there. And those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrasco?
Good morning. Thank you so much for all the insightful info. And I know that this is, these are going to be very rough times and it's going to take a lot of creativity to, to make sure that we continue to provide some of the services and programming that our residents. And especially in, for me, it's some of the programming that our children really are going to depend on, especially during the summer, especially after having been sheltered in place and had not been in a stimulating environment. You know, on the east side, as you know, a lot of the kiddos have been really struggling to transition to online learning. And, and my concerns are, are around how they've adjusted or not adjusted, and some of that loss of learning that they've done. And we don't know when exactly they're going to go back to school or, or how they're going to go back to school. And so our libraries are going to be instrumental, Jill, in my opinion, in supporting their academics. I, I, I don't in any way expect to put the onus on you, but I do. You know, sometimes we are the victims of our own success. And, and as, as the librarian of the year, you, you're going to carry that title on for a very, very long time. Yeah. But you, but, but I think it's true. We've just come to really depend on our, on our, on the, on the programming that you've set forth, on the creative team that you have, on your leadership, to support our kids in a whole different way. A lot of thinking out of the box, and I'm going to look to you to see how we're going to support children who have had a real struggle in transitioning from a classroom setting to online. And in some cases, they still haven't been able to do that. And so I know that four hours doesn't seem like a lot of time when you think about cutting, cutting it across the, the week. But, but four hours is still, you know, critical time when you've cut so much already during the school year. So again, I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. In, in the past recession, there was a blunt instrument that was taken to the cuts that were done across the board. I'm going to really ask all of you to really look at how we are very surgical about where we're making these cuts and that we really look at those areas. And I know that they're, they're everywhere. I don't pretend that it's just east of one oh one. I'm not pretending that. What I'm saying is that in those areas that are serving those communities that have been devastated by either COVID nineteen, or that we know are serving communities that are of low me, of, of, of low income and little means, who have struggled to get online, who live in cramped quarters and who maybe the only backyard that they have is the neighborhood park, that we do everything we can to ensure opportunities for them to get out there. And I think it was one of our council, my council colleagues said, you know, our residents love their libraries. They love their parks. Yes, that's true. I love it. And I love taking my kids out there. I love them running around and I love it when they come home and they fall asleep. But for some of our residents, it's not so much that they love it, they depend on it. They need it. It's, it goes beyond loving it. They depend on it because they don't have anything else. They don't have a backyard. They don't have an organic garden that they are free to plant in, and they don't even have a front yard. And so I'm concerned about our regional parks, all our regional parks being closed down on Mondays, especially Emma Push Park. I don't know about all the other regional parks, but Emma Push Park has programming. We've, you know, it's a working farm. You have the community garden in there. You have, I know you have the stables. I don't know how active those are in terms of the H Club and all those that come in and take care of their, their friendly cow. But you have, you have, just, oh, you have the preschool. I know that it might not be open now, but hopefully at some point. And you have a lot of other programming that goes on. And I know that we're trying to figure out how that's going to continue. But especially as summer is coming along, I want to make sure that, that we really, really look at whether Emma Push Park is positioned in a place where maybe closing it even on Mondays doesn't make sense. It is smack in the middle of apartments and very tiny, tiny homes from the Mayfair area. So I don't know what it would, if that actually, if, if keeping that one open actually makes any sense. But, but I just want us to consider it, and it's right next to the Powell Stadium. Which to me, by the way, having other programming there, like the movie nights, we've talked about this before, John. I think that makes perfect sense. The other thing that I want to talk about is Viva Parks. So, you know, Viva Parks, I thought was being paid, or part of it was, was being paid by, I thought we had monies from the county. Wasn't that in partnerships with the county?
I don't, Viva Parks.
For the east side, just for the east side, for District Five. I'm not saying yes.
Yeah. Hold on.
The County Public Health Department did through the Peace Partnership Grant, did allocate funds for the remaining parks in the designated zip codes that weren't already serviced through Viva Parks. But I believe we got word that for the coming year, that they were not going to fund us for this upcoming year. So they have funded it.
Yeah. When you say coming year, does that mean this summer?
Yes, we got word about two, three months ago that the Kachi grant through the Public Health Department wasn't going to fund us for this coming summer.
So there, there's no way that we can speak to our friends there who also represent some of the, the zip codes that we now see where COVID is going to focus her attention on, where, where Rona is going to focus her attention on and, and maybe make a case for it. Because again, tiny houses, crowded conditions, you know, keeping of course, social distancing and, and, and keeping to the guidelines. These kids are, are going to be. I just, I just really, you know, again, we don't have pools in the back, in our backyards. We don't have, you know, I've been, I watch, you know, friends of mine who live in, in other parts of the city. They can hang out the whole summer in their backyard and they're going to be fine. These kids are not going to have the aquatics program anymore at the community centers. They're not going, and they don't, they can't go to their neighbors. I mean, their friends across town, they can't. They've got nowhere to let off steam and they got nowhere to cool down.
So we are, we are not proposing to close any parks in this budget action. The, the one you were thinking of about Monday's closing is a, is a tier two or a second package. If things get worse and we, we would have that conversation, I think in September, as Jim was talking about. So right now, Emma Push, we're planning to do the summer programming there, like we've been talking about. So we'll still have summer camps. But you're right, the pool at Mayfair, for example, is closed. But there will be summer camps at Mayfair. Just they won't be able to have access to the pool.
Will we at least be able to put on the sprinklers?
At the, at the sites, yes.
At Mayfair?
Things like that, yeah, for the kids to play in. But it would be, it would probably be in small groups. You know, right now, we're not, we're not going to run the fountains at Caesar, Caesar Chavez Plaza, or at the other two parks where we have fountains. Because it gets people to gather in groups, which we're not supposed to do. And so it was one of those things that we thought, well, we're probably not going to be able to do much of it anyways this summer. So again, we suspended that program for the summer, just like aquatics.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, well, thank you. The, the, and I just skipped over, thank you for that, John, for the clarification. And hopefully we won't go to the tier two and close Emma Push. But again, if we were to go to tier two, what I'm going to continue to advocate for is to really be very mindful of, of, of those, whatever it is, whatever proposals are, that we're very mindful of where they sit and who they serve and what the needs are. Again, taking a blunt instrument and just cutting across as if every, everything were equal. It's not equal. And we have to be very mindful of that, you know.
So Councilmember, Councilmember, I think, yeah, I think point well taken. And I think we very much appreciate the fact that if we're going to need to get into a discussion with the council in the fall about Package Two, that we're going to really need to understand, you know, who are most service dependent and, and who are most impacted by COVID as we, you know, drive our decision-making around some of those pretty awful cuts that are proposed in Package Two. So I just want to reassure you that that, yeah, that will need to be part of our discussion at that time. Who are service dependent and, and who are impacted by COVID.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. And last, last thing, I, I skipped over you, Jill. You know, the Mount Pleasant Satellites Library, it sits right in an area where, where those families don't have access to a library nearby. Your thoughts on that and any way that we could, we could strategize on how we can maximize without breaking the bank? Or a partnership so that we could actually be a fit, more efficient versus taxing the general fund?
Yeah, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion about Mount Pleasant. There was concerns about possibly closing it and we, we said we need to keep open at least the 24 hours, which is permanently funded. The biggest question about Mount Pleasant right now is the fact that it is so physically small that the social distancing concern makes, you know, we're trying to be creative about how to even provide service out of that location in the interim anyway. And so I like, what you just said sparked me that, you know, I know the schools are very challenged right now. But we will definitely work with the Mount Pleasant District and the Robert Sanders School to see if there are ways that we could ensure, I mean, I'm sure that we can ensure that materials get to the kids and that they have access. The question is the broader community and perhaps we could utilize that. You know how it's situated on the, there's a lot there. Perhaps we can use the external space to make sure that people can have access. And perhaps we can work with the, I know the school board was instrumental in bringing the project to fruition. Maybe we can work with the school to incorporate more volunteers into the service so that we can be open more hours. So we'll definitely look into that. Some of it is dependent on the fact that the school is closed and they've been really struggling to figure out how to reopen as well.
Sure. And, and I think the, the lot that's there offers opportunities maybe for, for social distancing. And, and what I was thinking is similar to what the mayor had proposed is Alfresco Dining, maybe Alfresco Library with maybe some, some tents out there for expanded reading rooms or homework tutoring, but an extension to the, to the satellite libraries. I don't know, depending on, on what the need is there. But I would hate for, for, for our satellite library not to be used and not to be maximized in any way. But that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you so much for, for the time.
Thank you. I see hands up for councilmembers of Sparza and Jimenez, but I'm not sure if those are hands you previously had or they're new hands. Okay, I don't see them jumping in. So I'm, I'm going to assume that those are old hands and we'll, we'll move on to the next section.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll be moving on to strategic support and the appointees.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Okay, so we'll open it up. These are questions that would go to our city auditor, our city attorney, city clerk, city manager. And also for all the supportive services, that's IT. Boy, help me here, Dave.
IT, finance, HR, some, some public works.
Got it. Yeah, all the, all the stuff that makes the city go on the inside.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'll, I'll just start off with one question. It's, it's in the IT space while folks are collecting their thoughts. I, I see from the data that there's significant drop in expenditures on IT, but I think that may reflect a, a one-year spike that we had last year. We, we had some one-time money that we're putting into some key capital projects on the IT side. And it'd just be helpful to know if there are particular IT functions that we think are going to be more vulnerable or, or, or sacrifice or compromise in some way as a result of whatever's happening in this year's budget. Rob, could you just give us a sense about where the pain points might be and what, what is getting compromised?
Sure. Mayor Rob Lloyd, CIO for the city. The spike you write is in two major investments. We had the IT construction refresh to get the server storage compute piece of the city off of the 2006, 2007 vintage technologies. And then there was another one to modernize the computers of the city. That's been also impacted by COVID nineteen, where we put additional funds in, in the middle of the pandemic to get more laptops into the environment. So that's where the spike came from. The second part of your question is where are the investments still needing to be made? As you know, in our strategic plan, we had said that the recession is probably going to happen in 2019, 2020, and we're going to be ready for that. So you see a number of reductions because we were renegotiating contracts, RFP-ing items and creating space in our budget to reinvest. And then, and we said, we want to reinvest it, or if that recession does hit, then we have the capacity to, to fill that hole for the duration of, of that, of that economic downturn. So what we're sacrificing is two things. One is all the clearance that we made that we're going to continue to pay down our tech debt. So that was built over about a decade and, and two years. We're going to miss that now. So the investments and, and building up a sinking fund for the ERP replacement for an integrated financials, HR system, that's going to slow down. A couple of other business systems that we want to modernize and that are of, of right vintage. One of them is, I think, two years younger than me. So those things will slow down just because of the economic circumstance. And, and really what we're going to do instead is pivot as much resource as we can towards a drive to digital to get the organization into a highly mobile, highly remote workforce mode. That was actually part of our next generation, we said of the strategic plan. So it has hurt us in the sense that we're not going to be able to use the money we created to invest like we wanted to. But we are going to be very. Um, but we are going to be very focused on, on using what we have to make that mobile, secure, um, and, and digital workforce happen. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, thanks, Rob. And, um, I, you, you got me thinking, uh, and certainly I know that you're a young man, but you said that, but one of the systems we're utilizing is two years younger than you. Could you explain more?
Uh, yeah, our, our financial system is, is a ripe vintage. Um, I would like to say it's a collector's item, but it's not.
You, you were being literally true that this is a 1970s system?
Uh, yeah, roughly 1980, yeah.
1980. If you forgive me, I didn't mean to age you, Dave. A 1980s system, of course.
Mayor, this, this is Jim. If, if, if I could just real quick, uh, just to clarify though, that the IT sinking fund that was established last year of $2 million is still there. Um, like Rob said, we're just not able to add to that, but it is still that, that $2 million still remains in, in the budget.
Okay. And I'm guessing, given all the new demands on everything from remote permitting in the planning department to everything that's gone digital and the library team, um, we're, we're going to need every dollar just to shift the services we've got to, to more digital formats. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think you recall in the strategic plan discussion, we, we actually said that when that moment comes, we want IT to be prepared to be of help. So as departments say, because of these reductions, we need to do these things with technology because we won't have the money or the staff. The tools that we use become that equalizing force. And so absolutely, Mayor, uh, we want to be working with all departments on those technology investments and shifts that they need to make. So you will be, I think, seeing more technology investments, maybe not just in core IT, but across the entire organization. And, and that's kind of a coping or, or counterbalancing measure.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my last question was for HR slash Jim. Uh, and that is, uh, whoever wants to answer it. Obviously, we had, what seemed like the good old days problem, which was we weren't able to hire uh, fast enough to fill a lot of vacancies. I know a lot of those vacancies have gone away as we try to find savings. Do you have any sense of where we're at in terms of unfilled vacancies? Citywide, uh, and if you want to exclude public safety, I can understand why you want to do that because I know those are different set of issues since we haven't enacted a hiring freeze there. I just want to understand how hiring freeze intersects with, um, some of the needs we've had to get some key positions filled.
Sure. Jennifer Shumri, Director of HR and OER. Um, our vacancies as of April 30th were 687 citywide. That does include police and fire, um, which is an 11% vacancy rate. Um, just to clarify on the hiring freeze though, it's not that all positions are, um, frozen. There is an exemption process. So for critical positions, they can request to be exempted. Um, and the city manager's office approves those on a case-by-case basis. So we will still be continuing to fill critical positions.
Thanks, Jennifer. That's really helpful. Um, what do you expect that number to go roughly to when we're, if we approve the budget as it's proposed by the city manager, that 670 number?
That is a good question. Jim, do you know how many of those, uh, vacancies are being cut?
I think. See if we can get that in the next little, little bit here.
Okay. Even if it's a rough number, it would just be helpful to know. Thank you. Um, okay. We'll go to the council now. Councilmember Sparza?
Mayor, I think my hand was raised, still raised from before.
Okay. Uh, thanks. Councilmember Carrasco. Uh, I'm guessing Councilmember Carrasco either can't hear me or she may have had a hand up previously. So I'll go to Councilmember Carras.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so actually my question was in regards to, um, how we may be investing right now to prepare for all of the uh, digital access. I know Rob was just talking about it. Um, very quickly, right? We ramped up to having, uh, I don't even know how many, but imagine, you know, maybe thousand, uh, plus staff members online, um, and, and accessing information and, and all, you know, for, for Zoom and all sorts of access and, and so just kind of curious, obviously the, the, um, safety issues surrounding that, um, uh, I know that, you know, the, the Zoom bombing was a thing in the beginning and that was really on Zoom as a, as a company that, you know, same thing, same issues for them, right? Except for theirs were magnified, uh, a hundred times over, uh, with the number of participants that they had, um, and they have since, uh, put in place some better security measures. Uh, but I'm, I'm just looking through the IT department budget here and I'm, I'm curious because I'm not seeing anything that stands out to me that says how we're going to invest ourselves, um, and, and I, Rob, maybe you can just expand on what you were saying, uh, earlier, or, or, or if there's an answer specifically to what I'm asking now.
Sure. Yeah. Councilmember, um, a very good question. Again, Rob Lloyd, CIO for the city. Uh, so there's been a, since 2016 and, and actually the March 2017 approval of the IT strategic plan by council. Um, we've been moving towards that, that digital workforce of step by step. What, um, COVID-19 did is took about 13 months worth of work and took a big chunk of that and said, get that done in a month. Um, and, and so we did it in a kind of a messy way and in some parts, but, um, just to get everyone to be able to work from home. So in the space of a week, for example, we got a thousand people switched over, um, and, and that was on top of the people who were already able to access digital. You're, you're right though, there are matters of practice, matters of technology and matters of security that we still need to get better at and clean up. Um, you see in the, um, IT infrastructure and operations portion is where our cybersecurity, um, funding is. Um, and there is a step up of that. And as we get the RFPs awarded, which council will see in the coming months, uh, hopefully next two to three months, all those come, um, then we're going to implement those additional controls and it is very important. It's vitally important. Because the malicious actors, the criminals, um, have seen the shift to remote work as an opportunity. And as local governments have been talking about in state governments, billions and trillions of dollars of aid, they've been targeting us and, and we block about 80 plus percent of all traffic to the city, including emails now because of, of, of that criminal activity. Um, so you'll see a huge investment there and we're going to try to keep that as quiet as we can. So nominally impactful on people. But occasionally you're going to notice like VPN doesn't work like it did before because there was an additional control. Office 365 or Zoom are going to have updates or teams because people, as this huge push has come out, all those products have had to step up their game at mass scale, right? So maybe you had a hundred million customers before, now you have 400 million customers and some of those things are augmented. Number two, councilmember on, on your question is, uh, where I think you're going to see additional investments is in the, um, CARES funding. So like we did the PCs, um, and the shift to more mobile work. You're going to see it at the department level where they're saying, I, I need to invest some of these resources. And we're going to coordinate with the city manager's office, budget office and IT where there's additional investments where we're going to have to make a push somewhere to, to close a gap. Um, but I, I think what you're seeing in terms of speed is people are really focusing on keeping their operations going. And with the budget, now they're starting to focus on how am I going to have to reorganize things and what does that project or set of projects look like? So I, I think it's just a matter of time and there will be changes as we continue to adjust.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you for that, Rob. And, and thank you to your team, uh, for really, as you just described, um, I hadn't heard it described it as far as what the length of, you know, time we thought that that work was going to take and then, uh, you know, compressing it down to being able to respond within a matter of weeks. Um, and I know for, for my team specifically, just the, the response was terrific. Um, the ability that we had to immediately transition to not only ourselves just work from home successfully, but to engage with community members, uh, through meetings, to engage with other city staff and, and, and meetings. Um, and to feel comfortable with, with that and, and, you know, all of us learning this, you know, some of us had, you know, remote access, but it was just from our computer for email or something like that, right? And so to all of a sudden, um, get up and, and running, um, and feel educated and comfortable with it. Uh, really do thank your team for, for those efforts. That was, uh, terrific. Um, and, and, you know, um, appreciate the answer on the question too. That, that's everything, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Um, Rob, just one question and it's, I think my San Jose has been renamed to San Jose 311. Is that right?
It is. Yes, that's councilmember.
Um, so I know that our, my San Jose 2.0 is, is on the shelf. Um, can you talk a little bit about how San Jose 311 will be handled this year and kind of what, if there are any upgrades? We've been talking about languages, adding languages. We've been talking about adding functionality. How much of that is going to happen in the pre 2.0? Time period?
Uh, sure. So, so councilmember, uh, Rob Lloyd, um, the plan right now focuses on two components of work. One is language translation, uh, translation, and the other is recycle plus. And, and that will be our new 2.0. Um, and, and as San Jose 311 will also have some functionality that we're working as another package related to on the omni-channel, getting to virtual agents. So being able to call and speak your problem in multiple languages. So you can get faster and, and more precise response. And then beyond that, chatbots are on the, on the horizon. Um, so, uh, we're going to be focusing on those three things. There's still some details we work, uh, worked out internally on, on timing and the funding because of, of reality that's hit, um, related to the money. But that, that's going to be what we're focusing on roughly in the next month is how do we plan those pieces of functionality and when, when they'll be delivered? Uh, we have already negotiated with the vendor, um, and, and they're on board of refreshing 1.0 into kind of a, maybe a 1.7, so somewhere between one and two. So we're, we're going to try to do that and, and buy ourselves some time using the platform that, that's existed, but, um, making it more modern and fault tolerant and API friendly or than, than it has been. Uh, but we are going to, uh, because of resourcing, take the existing platform, refresh, cure it, build on those additional functionality and then look for a 2.0 in the future that that's going to rebuild, um, with this stuff that designed in the knowledge that we now have in that design.
And if I could add, um, councilmember, so, so to add on to what Rob's saying, the language translation is of the highest priority for the city manager's office to.
Yeah.
So we're going to do everything possible to maintain that. What's more questioned is the recycle plus enhancement. Um, as we're looking to, um, review the recycle plus rates and potentially lower those for the community this year. That is something that we're evaluating if that can move forward or not. So that I think is more in question from a timing perspective, but we're going to be doing everything possible to do the, at least the language translation portion of the enhancement.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, Councilmember Camus?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, uh, Rob and, and staff. I think that, um, I think, uh, the, the IT department is probably the most, uh, the, the best way we can, we can move forward. I hope, um, there, there's a lot of challenges ahead, I think. And I, I, good luck to you. I'm, um, I know that this is the way to go. I, I, we're all learning how to use Zoom and I think that that's going to be more efficient, uh, than, than doing these meetings. We, who knows? We might be able to do this, uh, permanently. Um, I do have a question though of for, afford, uh, on the budget tip, the budget, and I don't know about this, uh, recount of the votes and the million dollar that's needed for the uh, county registrars mistake that they made and that we have to pay for. Um, has that been counted into the budget? I didn't see it anywhere. Um, is it going to be part of maybe this year's budget? How, how is that going to be accounted for?
Councilmember, hi, this is.
No, go ahead, Jim. I, I, I don't think we have that programmed in. Um, so, and Jim can confirm that.
Yeah, that's not specifically programmed in. I think there was some savings we were going to count on as part of our reduction for 1920, which we backed off in at the last moment there. So we're going to see what remaining funding we have in 1920 and, and look to see where we need to aug, augment that as part of our year-end process.
Okay. So we have not come up with a way to pay for the mistakes of our county. Okay. All right. Well, that's, that's, uh, my question there. Uh, thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions on this section?
Mayor, if I could, uh, to take a, a shot at the, um, uh, at the question on the vacant FTE. So, uh, I think roughly about of those, of those existing positions, probably roughly about 90 of those vacancies are, would, would, uh, change. I think it's a little bit tricky though, because we have some adds also, so that overall number will change, but of those existing positions about, uh, 90 of those would, would, would be, it would be about 90 fewer.
Okay. So we'd be somewhere in the 500s in terms of vacancies. Is that right?
Likely, I think, but then we're going to do a little bit of ads here. So it's, it, you know, the upper five, 500s probably.
Some of those ads will probably be filled by existing employees, I assume, or being shifted or bumped. Is that?
Somewhere, yeah. Right.
Okay. So then, in terms of, uh, are, are we to assume that that we've actually identified that many vacancies as as critical? I mean, some amount of those 500 or so, let's say it's 550, just to throw out a number, that, um, some significant number of those are in police and fire where we don't have a hiring freeze, right?
Right.
Okay. And then of the remainder, we do assume most of those have been deemed critical? Or is that, is that just that they just haven't been eliminated yet?
Well, also I'm going to add, um, because I'm, I'm the hiring freeze committee with Jim and Jennifer. Um, the, a lot, there's vacancies in all departments. So you'll see vacancies in ones that are not general fund related. So that is an all funds vacancy number that Jennifer told you about. So, um, a smaller proportion is in the general fund and you, you do see them in many, many places and some of them are backfilled because we were trying to remain flexible as we were going through this budget process. But, um, you know, if they're, they're in police and fire and ESD and airports and all over, um, all over the organization. And so, you know, we're being very cautious about our hiring, but we are, and in development services and we are being cautious and, and releasing positions in the highest critical areas that we know, um, that we need to move forward with. They're at the least risk.
So I think to get to the mayor's, you know, ultimately, Mayor, I think we'll, and, and it's a good question. We'll need to really, it, it's really a general fund question to some degree, although there's other, other funds that are impacted and we're having to manage through obviously uh, impacts like airport and, and, um, and development services and perhaps others. But I, I think, you know, kind of getting to the general fund picture, um, how many vacancies do we have remaining in the general fund? Once we make these budget reductions is something we'll have to loop back on.
Okay, great. Uh, I, I see Councilmembers Davis and Camus have their hands up, but I think that's from before, uh, unless either of them wants to jump in with a new question. Okay. Uh, we'll then move on unless there's anyone else who'd like to jump in. I see no hands.
So next would be fees and charges.
Okay. If Carrie or somebody environmental services might be available, I'll give everybody a moment to to get assembled here. Um, I know that the fee that is of great concern to many residents was the notice that many received on the residential garbage pickup. And I, I just wanted to see when roughly we think we might have a sense of what that number, that 15% might be reduced to. Um, is that, is that something we would have a firm number on within the next couple of weeks or?
So I know, uh, I know Carrie's probably jumping on and we have others jumping on. I, I do see Linda on. I don't know. I don't want to put you on the spot, Linda, if you're able to answer that question.
Good morning. This is Lyda Chafars from ESD. Um, I, we are working, um, with the budget offices, looking at different options of reductions that we can make to bring down that fee. Um, so we're, uh, we're still working on that, looking to see what kind of reductions are reasonable to make to bring it down.
And Mayor, this is, this is Jim. Uh, again, that's the timeframe that we are, are working on too, is over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, great.
So we, so that we would have that prior to the, the, the G message release.
Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, Councilmember Carras?
Thanks, ma'am. Um, so my question is actually, uh, in regards to the off sale alcohol. Um, and I know we have, uh, at the state level, um, has allotted, uh, traditionally on only on sale alcohol venues to, um, you know, permit off sale, um, so long they follow certain parameters and, um, uh, I, I have taken quite advantage of this program, um, over the last number of weeks. And, uh, I think it's working fairly well. Now, this is temporary and we don't have, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm assuming, right? We don't have a, a program for this hybrid model. And so I have had the question from traditional off sale, uh, venues that are saying, okay, what is the future going to look like? Are we going to now fold all of these other? Are we going to now fold all of these other, you know, venues into the off sale and then now, you know, require them to to pay for the off sale alcohol permit? Or is there going to be a, you know, just this, this, you know, sort of variance right now in the short term because of the pandemic? And and the some of the venues that are already paying permits for off sale alcohol are saying, then can we get relaxation as well? Or and then my thought is, could there be a hybrid, right? And we and we sort of, you know, and find a middle ground. But I don't see that in the the budget document, and I don't know if we've considered what to do there.
Yeah, that's a good question. I I doubt that we have figured that out. I don't know if there's anyone, who's who would be in charge of that, Jim?
And I know that the governor is still allowed for this to continue on in these next phases, so that that has been a specific allot allotment. So or, you know, permissible action.
I I believe that's the code in in code enforcement.
Yeah, I see Rachel. Thanks.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
So, yes, the off sale alcohol program, the enforcement of that is in alignment with the current municipal code regulations as well as what's included in Title twenty as far as off sale alcohol permits that are required. So I've been also thinking about this because obviously we've been seeing lots of other things happening out there in the community. Definitely, there would have to be coordination at the state level with ABC. So that is something we could look at and get back to how we think that might need to happen if there was support for that program to evolve, to include some of these, you know, hybrid situations that we're seeing.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and maybe we could follow up then offline, because I'll tell you, the the venues that pay the permit already are not necessarily looking to, you know, bring down their their fellow businesses and and saying, hey, you now must, you know, pay exactly the same as I do. They recognize the the crisis. But at the same time, I think there's also an interest that there may be a different future, right? And and so and how long this may go. And so there's there's fairness that they're looking for as well. And and so, you know, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for maybe there's there's some sort of middle ground fairness where we have I I we rethink what this what this program looks like, or we rethink the cost of the program and and how the enforcement might look. And I recognize right now is kind of a gray area. So appreciate that, and maybe we can follow up, Rachel, if you don't mind, with my team as as you begin to learn more.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Anything for the councilor Peralis?
That's it right now, ma'am. Thanks.
Okay, customer Foley.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to emphasize the need to revisit our recycling rates and the cost to our consumers. I'm glad to hear that we're taking a look at reducing that fifteen percent increase. That was really a gut punch to our property owners and 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 will be passed on to tenants, too. The increase of fifteen percent. So I'm glad we're going to take a look at that, and I wasn't sure if this was the time to bring it up. So I just want to echo support for investigating that and hopefully bringing that down significantly, at least for the time being for our residents.
Thank you. Anything further?
Any other questions from council? All right, I think we've exhausted all the questions. Dave, does that?
Sorry, I, mayor, I did have a follow up, sorry.
Okay, sure.
Just running down the the fees here, and so I'll ask an in general question. So I'm looking at the different fees and, you know, for for instance, I just came across the public dance hall fee. I I don't imagine anytime soon we're going to be opening up, you know, these massive public dance halls or, say, for instance, the nightclubs in downtown and inviting in hundreds of people to, you know, hundreds of strangers to sweat on one another. So I am curious what it might look like for some businesses that that may not be back in business for some time. Are we going to be granting some form of of leniency? Or, you know, I I know we we did that a little bit already where we were just saying, hey, you know, you're we're not going to give a late fee, right? If you're not necessarily paying some of your your permitting fees right now over the last couple of months. But will there be something that we say, hey, we're not going to charge a dance hall or others? And again, I'm just kind of looking over, so I'm not seeing it exactly, but where there may be others that that they're just not permitted to do their their normal business? Will they be able to, you know, skip a fee?
Yes, I guess, I mean, we certainly ought to be looking at that, you know. I think, you know, a lot of our fees are are cost recovery fees. So they're fees for the services that we provide to enforce the permit in, you know, in some examples. And so we'll we'll have to look at that. Certainly, if we're not performing the service, they, you know, they don't need to pay the fee in in some cases. You know, I also.
A lot of these, Dave, are are annual, right? So whether you're so right, so I think they just so so it's it's they're paying it regardless of of if they're open or not, if it's an annual fee. That's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at that, councilmember, and I think, you know, what does that mean in terms of revenue loss to us and how we absorb that? So I I don't have a great answer for you, but I I do think we'll have to look at some of those those types of fees that you're talking about where business is not operating or is operating in a different manner, so we'll have to figure that out.
Is it possible? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Rick.
You just just it's something council would have to take action on, though, in terms of, you know, staff's ability to just waive fees is really not existent. So would be some council action would be require either systemic fees for a period of time or however the council wanted to go about do that.
And and so my other question was going to be, is this something we don't necessarily have to take up right now as we adopt the budget? And we could we could make these decisions as the the months carry on or when we come back, right? If we're going to come back at the end of summer or fall and look at the budget again, because I just don't know if we'll have the answer on some of these, you know, before we adopt our budget on on when some of these businesses may be able to open.
Agreed, and I think, you know, also, you know, what what does our recovery plan look like? What what role do we want to play in terms of trying to facilitate that recovery in the business community? I I understand completely the the interest probably in in waiving fees to so that we can help with that facilitation. Obviously, we'll have to understand budgetarily what that means to us. But I do think there's going to be a lot of discussion that we're going to want to have on the recovery front. I know we've had some of it already here in the last day or so, but I I would see a lot more conversation, discussion and engagement with the council on, you know, what do we want to do and how are we going to be able to facilitate and stimulate, you know, recovery in our community?
Yeah, I guess what I wanted to try to stimulate, right, was just our proactive thinking on things that would make common sense. And and for instance, again, using the example as I scrolled through of of a nightclub, right? If if they're being told you're still, there's no way you're going to open, right? And it's not permitted by by law. And and that may be till the end of the year, that may be till sometime next year. I think it's it should be common sense to us to say, well, that's not fair that we're going to charge them their annual permit fee. And and there may be other instances like that. And so, but if that, you know, again, i- if if this looks like this, you know, we can make some of these decisions as we go. I I think clearly it'd be great to make them now during the budget so we know the impact. But as we're talking about the, you know, what our economic recovery support looks like, if if there's other, you know, opportunities to have that conversation throughout the year, I do think we should be eyes wide open about that. And I I'm thinking of some of these things as I'm trying to develop what my budget document might look like. Albeit, right, we're looking at very slim dollars for our essential services. So there's not, you know, there's not a ton to go around there. But this is where my head's at, is just some of these things that that wouldn't, you know, trying to not create just another undue burden on businesses that are already suffering.
Yep.
That's it. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, councilmember. Other questions or comments? Okay, Dave, have we exhausted the agenda?
No, we haven't.
Next, we're gonna, we're going to move into the capital program.
Sorry, mayor.
Yeah, councilmember, yeah.
Sorry, can I just ask one one quick question, since Councilmember Peralis mentioned essential services? I'm just curious if your budget document changes at all in or your your proposed budget changes at all in terms of the essential services allotment, given coronavirus and all that? Can we still rely on that estimation, three hundred thousand?
So so councilmember, that the, oh, I, that the, your question's for the mayor, I believe.
For the mayor, for the mayor, yeah.
I think it's now a hundred thousand for the document, right?
I'm sorry, councilor, if you please repeat the question.
Sorry, so in your March budget message, the proposal for the essential services was three hundred thousand dollars for.
No, it was three million.
Oh, sorry, three, yeah, three million, so.
Yeah, and it's been reduced to one million by virtue of the changed circumstances.
Got it. Okay, that's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Okay, all right, should we move on to the capital? Yes, please.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, great.
Mayor, you know, you know, hang on while I switch up to get a quick presentation for myself and and Matt Kane of the Public Works Director to spin through the capital program.
Great.
Give me just a moment to work on that. Let me share my screen with this guy. All right, are we are we seeing what what I'm what I'm seeing here?
We are.
All right, perfect, great, right? Well, thank you, folks, so switching gears here to talk about the twenty twenty one proposed capital budget and the twenty twenty one twenty five capital improvement program. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the high dollar summaries that are in the capital budget itself. And then Matt Kane, our Public Works Director, will walk through some of the the highlights of the capital program by the various CSAs. And like the operating budget, we do organize our capital budget book by the 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 CSAs with the different individual capital programs built in there. So, for example, in US, we've got sanitary storm sewer, we've got water control. TAS, example, we got the traffic capital program. So pretty pretty standard fare here from the normal capital budget book. Again, you've seen this again, so we're going to talk about here is the twenty two percent here in the capital funds. So the operating budget kind of comprises the general fund and the special funds. And now we're going to focus in on that, on that capital fund component, which is about one billion dollars over the five, sorry, one one billion in twenty twenty one and about three point three million a billion over the five years. So here is a historical comparison of what the five year CIP is and see how we have ramped up in previous years. And and you see the bigger spike here in the last CIP, the last five year CIP. That included, you know, both, you know, the the increased level of investment at the water pollution control plant along with the with the allocation of measured measured T dollars. In twenty one through twenty five, that amount is a little bit reduced for a few reasons. One of them is because the first tranche of measure T issuance was done nineteen twenty, so now that falls out of the five year CIP window. A little similarly, a little bit different financing plan for the capital program at the plant. And then we do have some reduced revenues because of the economic situation. So for the construction and conveyance tax proceeds, those are those are are down about twenty million from the past CIP as well as the construction excise tax funds, which help fund the traffic capital program. So a little bit lower of reduced revenues, but still at pretty significant levels here for our CIP. Here's the different components that make up our revenue sources. Again, our financing proceeds here are largely comprised of of a short term paper notes and bond proceeds for the wastewater pollution control plant upgrade as well as our measured measured T program. Other government agencies is a broad category where we have federal funding for a variety of of aspects for well, actually, funding from the federal, state and local governments. So that's everything from FAA grants for the airport to federal dollars for transportation and safety improvement programs. And then also includes the VTA money for some of the pavement work. So a lot of a lot of funding there comes from external sources, which have been always been a critical component of our of our CIP. Contributions, loans and transfers are transfers from some other other funds to to affect the capital work. A lot of these come from our rate rate payer funds in the sanitary operating funds and the plant operating funds that get transferred over into the capital fund to do capital work. We got our beginning fund balances, which is carryover money from the previous year that gets spent down over the five year CIP to carry forward projects that are multi year in nature. And we've got some from our taxes, fees and charges. Again, those are things like the CNC proceeds, building and structure, construction tax, which funds the traffic capital program, the construction excise tax, which funds the traffic capital program, our 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 passenger facility charge fees, which is helps fund the airport program. So a lot of a variety of sources in those taxes. And then we have a little bit of interest and some miscellaneous contributions would all add up to our three point three billion dollar source over the five year CIP. Looking at the how the the capital program sort of stacks up against each other. So these are all the individual capital programs that are included in the in the CIP. So some of the larger ones here, just to point out that are obvious, looking at percentage of the capital budget total is are over the five years is our traffic capital program. It's been tremendously enhanced over the last few years with infusion of both measured measured T dollars and the inclusion of of the VTA measure, the VTA measure B dollars as well. So that's been really critical for for that program. Again, the very large capital improvement efforts to rehab the water pollution control plants. And then the airport, which has some reduced capacity this year, obviously, from what it had been in years past, but still a pretty significant component. And then again, our parks and community facilities development capital program, a pretty significant component, but is a little bit reduced because of the anticipated lower CNC revenues that we're going to have over the next five five years. Our public safety cap program has also been beefed up over the years and due to the measured T dollars for the things like the new fire station, police training facility and and some others. And now I'm going to switch it over here to Matt to talk through the the different components of the CIP.
Thank you, Jim. Matt Kena, Director of Public Works. Just briefly going to run through the capital program, capital improvement program, as well as some of the specific projects that we're working on. And as you all know, the program is a partnership of many different departments in the city, Transportation Department, Airport, Environmental Services, Parks and Rec, Public Works. In addition to finance and budget, which are a little more behind the scenes, but obviously extremely important to delivering our capital program. We really, as a group, focus on not just building projects for our community, but building projects with our community, bringing our community along in the development of projects, bringing our construction firms and our businesses along, too. And obviously, with what's been going on the past few months, that even seems more important than it did in prior years. And so we're going to continue to try and double down on on those efforts as we continue to move forward on our construction projects and our capital program. And as we balance our capital program, we also continue to balance that with the one point six billion dollar infrastructure backlog that we have, and we reported on to council earlier this year, balancing investing in infrastructure projects with new projects. Next slide, please. This is a brief summary of the measure T projects. We're actually coming to you on June second with a more detailed report on the status of every project and program within measure T. As you know, the six hundred and fifty million dollar bond measure that was passed in two thousand eighteen, three hundred million of that for streets, a significant dollar amount for public safety facilities and other improvements such as storm and clean water, bridges, LED lighting, community center enhancements and other critical infrastructure. And one project that you'll see moving forward in June to your to city council for a construction award is Fire Station thirty seven. We received the bids for that last week, and we're evaluating those bids right now and planning on recommending an award of that construction project next month. Next slide, please. And this, as Jim showed in some previous slides, there's a number of funds in the capital improvement program and focusing on different types of projects. This is the Community and Economic Development CSA. For the most part, this CSA facilitates the construction of underground utility projects. One project we have moving forward actually into construction in the next few months, moving to council for award next month is a Park Avenue and from Bird to Delmas and San Fernando Avenue Utility Undergrounding. So we're looking forward to moving in for looking forward to moving this project forward to construction and completion. Next slide. The Environmental Utility Services CSA is definitely our largest capital improvement program by CSA right now, for the most part. Um, for the most part, because of the regional wastewater facility, as you can see. One thing I wanted to mention, actually, I meant to mention in the previous slide, the bars that you see here are five year CIPs. So um, if you look at the right hand most bar on each one that says FY twenty-five at the bottom, that's the current five year CIP you're looking at as part of today's study session. The four previous bars show the prior five year CIPs for the past four years. So you can see a comparison of how we're trending in each of these programs. So again, the far right bar is the current CIP, five year CIP that you're looking at. Um, some major projects going on, um, regional wastewater facility, the cogeneration facility, the digester upgrades. And in the sanitary program, um, the fourth street sanitary interceptor project. Um, this CSA also has a water utility, um, with set with mini water as well as the storm program. And next slide. Neighborhood services, um, this is, um, consists of the library capital improvement program. A lot of the library capital program is used for acquisition of materials and efficiency projects and facility improvements. The Parks and Community Facilities Capital Program, um, some highlights of some projects that are moving forward there are a number of accessible playground projects at Emma Prush, Lincoln Glen and Rotary Playground. So those are some exciting projects that'll be moving there, continuing to move forward for our community. Uh, next slide. Public safety, as you can see, the past two, five year CIPs have been substantially larger than the three before that. Um, that is obviously because of measure T that was passed in November two thousand eighteen, which provided a significant amount of funding for public safety projects. A few that are currently moving forward in this CSA, um, are the Emergency Operations Center, um, Design and Construction, which we're planning on having in front of you later in this year or possibly early, very, very early in two thousand twenty-one for award of that project combined with the new fire, fire training center. Um, and the airport fire facility, which is moving, continuing to move forward and being moved from its current location. Um, next slide. Transportation and Aviation Services, this consists of the traffic, parking and airport CIPs. Um, one major project in addition to the fire facility that I mentioned in the last slide going on at the airport is the parking garage right now. And, um, number of traffic safety facilities and the traffic CIP and projects. And next slide. Um, and then in the next slide, um, the strategic strategic support CSA, um, has municipal improvements, service yards and communications. Um, a couple of major projects that are going on right now, um, the Silicon Valley Regional Communication System, a partnership between Public Works, Fire and Police, to, uh, to enhance our radio system and communications. And, um, the City Hall HVAC project, which, um, is under construction, um, stopped for a little while, um, due to the shelter in place, but is resuming again and will be completed, um, by July-ish or July or August this year. And most of the floors, um, have already been converted above the tenth floor, um, to the new system. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, I also just want to mention there's representatives from many departments here that are involved in the capital program that can help with any questions.
Great, thanks, Matt. And thanks, Jim. And I know that you'll have many fans as soon as that HVAC system is completed in City Hall. Hey, can we go back to slide five for a moment? I, Jim, I appreciate this is how we presented capital budgets for as long as I can remember, and I've been around for too long. Um, I'm trying to do the math here. I think it's something like thirteen years. Um, and I just wanted to offer, as long as I've been here, this this kind of description still doesn't make sense to me. And that's not your fault. This is just the way we've always done it. And and so I'm not blaming you. But but I just want to make a pitch, um, for changing in the years ahead, how it is we're presenting information. So it becomes much more meaningful as to the basic questions that the council and the public are going to have about the what, the how and the why. As as we look at this, for example, as as we know, you know, other government agencies, contributions, loans, transfers, there are multiple sources here, right?
Yeah, there are.
And I I think what we really want to explain to folks is how much of this is coming from measure T? How much is coming from VTA? How much is coming from SB two in the state? What's coming from rate payer funds? You know, what are the levers that are resulting in the resources that we have to build out a capital infrastructure? How much are we depending on those? It just seems to me that that's the kind of description, uh, that you were trying to provide verbally to this slide. And I I didn't time it, but there was a lot of description you were trying to offer here. And it seems to me that that charts that actually describe the basic source, um, would be more helpful because it would mean you'd be doing a lot less explaining and we'd be doing a lot more understanding at the outset. So I just wanted to offer that for going forward. Again, I know this isn't you. This is just how we've always done it. But I think most folks in the public, when they see stuff like this, their eyes glaze over because because, you know, all this stuff is pretty much budgetary gobbledygook unless we're actually identifying what the real source is. And that's, that's, I just offer that for 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 the next time around.
Mary, that's a very fair comment. This stuff is in more detail in the book itself, but, uh, we can definitely work to make the presentation better.
Cool, thank you. Um, okay, uh, questions for members of the of the council? About all things capital? This would include parks, public works, transportation, all the environmental services projects, airport. Any questions? I I guess the only question I had was then about, um, the CIP relating to the airport. It looks like we're s- is it the case that we're still sort of including in the five year projection for the airport, the two hundred seventy-one million? Let's see now, that's not the full one billion that would be or one plus billion that we contemplate, right, John? For for the next phase of build out?
Mr. Mayor, John Aiken, Director of Aviation, yeah, the, um, the future Phase Two work that was, uh, that was recently covered in the master plan update is not included in this, uh, in this program. It's, uh, you know, it's start dates are still out in, um, out of ways and need a lot of discussion before we get to, uh, any kind of activity like that.
Got it. Okay, so still TBD. Good to know. All right, thank you. Uh, that was the only question I had. Any questions from the members of the council? All right, uh, I guess we've exhausted the council, Dave.
Yes, so I I I think, uh, I think that means we are, we are done, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for your very hard work. And we know there's a lot more work ahead. So, uh, thanks, uh, Jim and team, uh, and everyone in the departments who are working so hard to see how we can pull this together, uh, and keep the wheels on. Uh, with that, we'll, uh, I know we'll have more budgetary discussions ahead. We have a community budget meeting this Saturday, and we encourage everyone to invite others, uh, including Jorge Peralos, who apparently has just joined us. And, uh, we'll have, I know, community meetings the following week as well online, including translation in Spanish and Vietnamese. And so just want to encourage my colleagues to nudge folks to join, uh, where they have any concerns at all. And thank you, Jorge.
Mary, if I can offer, we do have a public hearing on the budget on the twenty-first, Thursday, the the twenty-first.
Oh, forgive me. I get that date wrong. Thank you, Jim. Uh, Jim, do you want to just tell us that the time is that just so we make sure we?
Yeah, so I believe that is Thursday, the twenty, uh, first at one thirty.
One thirty. Okay, great. Thanks, Jim. All right, thanks, everybody. Stay healthy.
Thank you.